Good afternoon, everybody. 3:30, 3:40 P. M. on June 16th. Welcome to the Joint Workshop with the City Commission of Fort Lauderdale and the Budget Advisory Board. Thank you all for attending. Mr. Clerk, could you please call the floor? Commissioner Moritas?
Here.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner Sorenson?
Here.
Mayor Trent House?
Here.
And do you want me to call the board too?
Yes, please.
And for the Budget Advisory Board, Chair Brian Donaldson?
Here.
Vice Chair Johnny Smith?
Here.
Jeff Lowe?
Here.
Ross Camerata?
Present.
Christopher Williams? Not present. Michael Marshall? Adam Saban?
Here.
Robert McGrath?
Here.
Pro- 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 Polling Patel?
Yep.
And John Zanis?
Not present. Okay, we have a quorum.
We have a quorum. Okay, great. Thank you so much. So I want to thank you all for taking time out of your day today to participate in the budget workshop. And so going forward, I'd like to hand the floor over to Brian Donaldson, who's the Chair of the Advisory Board. Brian?
Hi, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for Commissioners for participating in today's joint workshop. A lot has changed since the last time that we all met as a group on February 19th, when I laid out the plan for how we were going to-
Speak up a little bit more, Brian, if you can.
Okay. When we last met, it was February 19th, and I had laid out then the plan that we had put into place for various meetings with the City Manager and staff. And obviously, a lot of that changed with the national issue with COVID. And so today, what I would like to do is not to go through all of the line items. I mean, all of you have received everything from the City Manager. I'm really going to keep it at a higher level than in the weeds. I think there's some points that need to be discussed and shared with you as a commission that need some talking points. So that is really my focus today. There's three things on the agenda. First is my report, and then we'll have a report from the City Manager in regards to where we are in the 2020 budget. Because as you all prepare, it has made some differences in revenue for the 2020 budget, which will be ending at the end of this business, at the end of September.
I think it is.
Brian, it's really hard to hear you, Brian. Really difficult. And I have you on maximum volume.
I'm on maximum volume. Let me see if I can get... All right. Is that any better?
Well, I think we can hear you, just not as loud and clear. But keep going, Brian.
I'll try to talk loud. So since we met, we've had COVID, and we've had recently the various protests. When we had our BAB meeting last week, it was the first time that we had any real public input, and people had signed up to address BAB. The three callers all addressed and all were challenging to the Budget Advisory Board that we, as a board, should be re-looking at the budget that was in front of us. And they brought up this hashtag "defund the police", and they challenged us to reshift dollars into different funding. We have not addressed that in this budget. And I just wanted to put it out there that this is a new thing, and I think that this is not an issue that is strictly to the Budget Advisory Board. This is something that all of you, as a commission, and the City Manager, and the city in general, are thinking of strategically how we are going to move forward with this new movement. So I just wanted to put that out there, that this budget that we're going to be talking about does not have any changes based upon that movement. And I didn't know if any of you wanted to discuss that, Mr. Mayor, or not, before I move forward with comments.
I think you should just move forward with the exhibits that you've attached to the agenda. And City Commission, I think the City Commission can discuss that at a separate time amongst themselves to see how or if we're going to respond to anything regarding the police budget. All right?
Okay, great. So after much review, what I wanted to share with you today is that through this whole process, we feel as if, as a board, that we can stand unanimously, we voted last evening, last week, to support the current proposed budget as it stands with the zero increase in ad valorem. So that's the first thing that I wanted to put out there, that we have evaluated, reviewed, and there are additional line items that will need to be addressed between now and when it comes forward to your review in September. There were still some outstanding things, but I have confidence that as a total, we felt as if the items that Chris and the staff has put forward, at this point, with you having to set your trim notice ad valorem max next month in July, and this is our last chance to meet before that, that we can say with confidence, we do not feel as if the city services will be adversely affected by having a 14th year of a flat ad valorem. Now, that doesn't come without some challenges. And there's two items that are on the list that the City Manager has presented to you that I wanted to point out and have some type of a feedback. The first item is a $2.3 million savings to help manage this budget and avoid an ad valorem increase by having all the way across the board, union and non-union, all employees of the city to not receive a COLA increase for the 2021 fiscal year. The second item was a $700,000 item, which was to adjust the initials, the Florida Retirement System, the FRS, to delay moving into that program until the next fiscal year, and that's $700,000. So those, we felt, as the Budget Advisory Board, were two big savings that we felt that needed to be brought to your attention. And perhaps-
Brian, if I can interrupt you for a second. Which exhibit are you referring to that references that recommendation?
It would be the... It would be in the City of Fort Lauderdale General Fund Preliminary Budget Estimates that the City Manager sent to all of you, I believe, last week. It looks like this.
Okay. All right, but that's not attached to the agenda, is it?
No. There was really nothing that I'm going to be talking about today attached to the agenda. What's attached to the agenda is Chris's update on the 2020 fiscal for the COVID, and then there will be a presentation from STAMTEC in regards to revenue for 2021. So I want to point some up because they have been brought forward BAB, and this is our chance to give you what I feel are points that we need to highlight to you. Out of all the information that Chris has posted online and sent to you, I mean, there's 350 pages to the preliminary budget online on the city website that the public can start to review, and your staffs can review as each of the Commissioners and the Mayor to come back to us. But I was really trying to keep the big points to my presentation today of what I think are our conversation points that you need to be aware as Commissioners and the Mayor. And those are two, I think, very key points that help make the budget balanced. And those are two items that I think are-
Okay, so the focus of this afternoon's workshop is next year's fiscal policy has not anything to do with the balance of this year's fiscal policy. Is that correct?
The second item is just a recap, which is going to be presented by the City Manager, which is in your backup, which is just giving you an up-to-date as to where we are 2020, based upon the revenue shortfalls, based on COVID. But the conversation is really about the 2021 budget. This is our last chance to talk to you before you have to set your max ad valorem rate in a couple of weeks at your July 7th meeting. And so this is where we are weighing in, that we don't think that you need to put in a sort of a holder, like you did two years ago, with an additional max ad valorem on the trim notice.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
That those two things can happen, then I would go into some of the other points that I wanted to bring up. So does anyone have any questions for Chris or BAB in regards to those points?
Could I, Mr. Mayor, could I offer a comment just quickly?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. So Brian, yes, you summarized that well. Well, I'll say, in Commission, we've talked about this a little bit, but we will certainly talk about it in August and September as we move into October. But this budget year is going to be one of those where we had to use some pretty significant strategies to get the budget balanced and be able to hold the millage rate at 4.1193. I want to highlight very specifically those, just so it's clear, that when we look at those two items that Brian brought up, they were very necessary in order to get the budget balanced. But I can tell you, I want to make sure the Commission hears that that doesn't mean that all of a sudden, we've got a workforce that has given everything up. You've got a workforce that I'm still recommending, that participates in our merit increases, our merit reviews by performance. The only thing I'm suggesting that we hold off on for one year is a cost of living adjustment that is tacked on to that merit increase every year. The other thing is the Florida Retirement System, which you mentioned. Not moving away from it, just pushing it out for a year. Things have changed in that system that were not present last year when we were talking about it. And I think it's prudent for us to watch it for one more year, make sure it makes sense for Fort Lauderdale. But I'll be quiet now and say, really, at the end of today, like Brian mentioned, the goal is not necessarily to understand all the principal parts of the proposed budget, but to know that when you go in July, that if you set the millage rate, the maximum millage rate at 4.1193, that me and my staff, as well as the Budget Advisory Board, feel as though that will carry the city of Fort Lauderdale through fiscal year 2021.
So when you speak of the Florida Retirement System, are you talking about our venturing into it for the Commission or more than just the Commission?
Well, when we had talked about it, we had talked about venturing into it for the Commission and then offering it as an option for all employees. If we defer it for a year, we've still held a placeholder to review a retirement option for the elected officials. So it's not asking you to not explore a retirement option. I would just like to hold off on the FRS for one year. It's not as financially a viable answer for us today as it might have been a year ago.
Okay. And going forward in this analysis, going forward in this analysis, if it turns out that there is an increase in revenues once we get our trim notices, this discussion will be modified, and we'll be able to look again at whether expenditure is based on the anticipated increase in revenue. Is that correct?
Yeah, there will be a couple of things that happen along the way that could cause us to relook at that. If we look at this budget, additional revenues might be one of them, although we're pretty certain what our property digest is going to be for 2021. We could have some cert tax funding that would replace the IP projects. So yes, as we move towards October the 1st, there are influences that could make this budget change and likely will. Very rarely do you get it right on the first try. As in years past, we'll have to make those modifications along the way.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I do. I want to go back to the Mayor's comment. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, he was talking about FRS, and I know it moved forward because of the Commission asked. So if you're pushing it out into the future, this might be a question for Alan. We can't vote on matters that will give us a raise or give us benefits. So we already said move forward. So if we stop it now, because we're trying to balance a budget, how does that impact those of us that will be on the ballot and we do it next year? Then it's null and void.
You raise a good point. Well, you're right. You voted for it to occur this term, I mean, this upcoming term. If the subsequent decision, although you've decided that, that may be an issue, that going forward, if we move it a year ahead, at that point, you would essentially delay it for yourselves, not for the rest of the city, but for yourself as a board, you could be limiting yourself to not starting that until three or four years after that for the next term.
And that's how we got here, because it was us talking about it. And then I think Herb said we all, no, we probably could, the whole city can join in. And now if we're saying, hey, it's too much, I'm just bringing it up so that we would know for the next four years, you know, if we got it, you couldn't benefit if we're re-elected.
The only recourse potentially, and we'd have to look at it, is you've already voted on it prior to taking office in the next election. So if it's just a matter of delaying the implementation, that might be saving grace because you've already voted on it. So I don't know that you necessarily would have to revote on it. If you do have to revote, that may be an issue. But there may be a way to do it as basically sort of a delay. So we have to look at that, but that's a very good point. Well, Robert, we have between now and September 30th to make that decision anyway. So we'll see what the revenues look. Yeah.
Okay.
And I can tell you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner McKenzie, that, you know, we can, there's still room to make those type of amendments. If that becomes an issue, there's other balancing strategies we could implement if we need to.
Okay.
Brian?
All right, great.
Can I ask one more question, Mayor and Brian?
Yes, Heather. Yes.
I guess to piggyback off McKenzie's question, I thought that was good. Chris, maybe it's not FRS for the Commission, but just allowing the Commission to participate in whatever the other city employees are currently participating in. I think that was the genesis of our conversation, was that we just felt like we should at least be able to participate in what all the other employees are doing. So I don't know if Alan, if you're legally looking at that, maybe it's just allowing the Commission to participate in whatever is effective or in effect for the rest of the city staff.
And in the budget that is presented, there are dollars allocated for the Commission's participation in the currently existing retirement plan of the city.
Okay, so maybe that answers some of the concerns that you're thinking about, McKenzie. And if the city switches to FRS, then maybe we switch too, or maybe we don't. But I think as long, if that's in there, then that addresses the concerns we had that we already voted in for the next commission that starts in January. Okay. Brian, you're talking about some line item concerns. You mentioned two issues, the COLA and the delay in the FRS. If you have any additional line item concerns, can you get those to us too? Or will we-
That's where I'm going to continue on.
Okay, so let me address then the two things that you did just mention. I agree, when I saw the no COLA, I did discuss it with Chris and everything. And it looks like, you know, our merit increase can be up to 3%. So it looks like in the past couple of years, we have given almost five. So I feel comfortable if we could give, you know, up to that 3% increase with our staff. I think that's, you know, I support that change maybe for this year. I think that's still a good increase. And then I wanted to see, I see the sheets that you're talking about, you're talking about this sheet. I wanted to see if there's any way we could possibly rank the, or this one too. This is the expenditure reductions that Chris had sent us. Maybe, because you mentioned, you know, the COLA and the FRS, and there's also the OPEB contribution that we are going to make for their health insurance too, that I was kind of discussing with somebody. So maybe we get to a point where we can rank, if we do get additional revenues between now and the time we have to make a decision, which ones we add back in. That's where, because I see the whole list, but I'd like to know kind of as a group, what would we add back in if we can in the next couple of months? So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other-
Anybody else have questions?
I have a quick question. Just a quick question might be, I'm not sure who I direct this to, but this is the first I heard. I know, Chris, we spoke about the FRS, mentioned pushing it out a year. My question is, if we push it out a year, like the OPEB, if we push out the FRS for a year, do we actually owe that money?
No, we do not. We have not entered the plan yet. So we were spending the year attempting to enter the plan. The percentage contributions changed within the last 365 days. A year ago, it was financially a better plan than we are currently in with our current systems. Maybe that's not the same statement today, which is why my request is that we just watch it for an additional year, but continue to offer an elected class option for retirement, just in our current system.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a future liability.
It is not.
Thank you.
Now, into, it's a follow-up to Commissioner Moritas. There is additional conversations that BAB had last week with the City Manager in regards to some of these other items, and we will be reviewing back to those. But I'm just going to try to highlight today some information that I felt that really needed to be highlighted out of all of these pieces of paper for all of you to get some feedback for all of us as we look through this. And as a follow-up to the Mayor's comment, currently, it looks like there is going to be, from the County Assessors Office, we feel pretty comfortable, from what I've been told by Chris and staff, is that this 5.3% increase, which will give us an additional $8.2 million in revenue with the same ad valorem rate. Now, that's lower than what we traditionally had had in the last two years. We've taken that into account, and we feel as if that number is part of the numbers that are being massaged. So just so that you know, there might be some additional changes, et cetera. And there's other projections in these light item numbers, but we feel as if the numbers that they've received from the county are pretty close to that. But I also just wanted to then go into the next point. We, when BAB met last March, or our last meeting right after we met with all of you in February, we went into this process without any preconceptions that we were going to definitely not consider an ad valorem increase. And I want to make that clear. We had shared with each of the department heads and the City Manager that we expect you to bring to us what are the best ideas, the new ideas, the additional needs in order to make sure that we are all proud to be people in this city. And it happens to turn out that through strategic reductions, there are still additional new items that are in this budget that we can fund and still hit the ad valorem, keeping it constant. So a couple of the items that came out from the department conversations that BAB was very excited about and that we saw then last week in the preliminary budget from the City Manager was, for example, a $1 million increase over last year for street lighting. That is all things that we've heard throughout the city, that there's been a lot of additional needs or frustrations. There's only two additional FPs in the budget this year, and those two are devoted to the street lighting enhancements, which are part of the priorities of the Commission. We also were excited to see that we're going to make sure that we have the tools for our employees to make sure that our safety personnel, police and fire, have some of the additional tools they need. They have made a request for additional funding for, to be able to get up to the NFPA compliant uniforms for the fire department. And the City Manager has put in that additional $100,000 into the budget. The police chief asked for some additional critical equipment, which he explained was additional tasers, additional training things. That was an additional $400,000, and that's in this budget. I'm very excited about how they described. It's called a shot spotter. It's a new program. It's new technology that will be implemented in an additional $195,000, that they'll be able to place sensors in strategic parts of the city. And as soon as there is a gunshot, it sends a message to the city. You don't have to wait 15 minutes for someone to call 911, or if they never call. So there was some new technology that BAB was excited to hear from our police and fire that the City Manager has put into this budget. So although this budget has less revenue than what we had in the past, and we're still balancing to a flat ad valorem, it's not all strategic reductions. There are definitely new items that are going to enhance the city through this budget. And I just wanted to point out a few of those. Another thing I wanted to share was that when the taxpayers had approved the new department and the new parks bond, last year, we only had a first initial amount put on everyone's tax bill because that wasn't being ramped. So we didn't issue the full $200 million. It's in stages. And I wanted to let everyone know that I heard Chris and his team that the number for this coming fall is going to be flat to the last fall because there is money that was raised and is in that, is in those budgets that we don't need to step up yet. We had anticipated that we would have to double this fall, so we aren't looking to double that. There is a new item on the tax bills this fall, which is the stormwater rates, which will be then, is on your agenda for your evening. So there will be that new number for both a first time for condo owners and single-family owners. They will see a line item. They'll have savings in their water bill, but the total is higher than what their old water bill was in net. And condo owners never saw a water bill, so their building water bill will go down. But now they will have a first-time stormwater assessment on their tax bill. So those are new changes. And then I wanted to also then go into, you know, staffing levels. We had a lot of conversation about staffing levels. And, you know, we know that we're down this year in 2020. These projections are based upon economy coming back strong, et cetera. Fortunately, the city of Fort Lauderdale is not geared, is into the same structure of revenue that some of the other cities are. And so we aren't going to have as much of an impact. I feel as if Miami features some of the others, the way that their budgets are construed. But I wanted to let you know that we were looking at staffing levels, and it challenged the City Manager in regards to possibly non-police and fire of putting a hiring freeze because we don't want to get to a point where we're filling positions, and then if we're not making our revenue come next fiscal year, that we're then into layoffs. So right now, this budget, even with a flat ad valorem, is not proposing to make any staffing changes or cuts. But I just wanted to share with you a few numbers because I know that some citizens have been asking me and other board members. Since 2013, this city had 2,268 employees. In 2020, we have- In 2020, we have 2,700 employees. So we've added 432 people in the last seven years. So to be able to have a budget in 2021 without staffing cuts, I think is pretty significant. Also, on the, on the general fund, we had 1,599, we now have 1,748. So in payroll, for this city in the last seven years, it's gone from 260 million to $389 million in payroll. So we're running a city at $129 million more a year in payroll, and we've kept the ad valorem flat. So I think that's pretty significant in the fact that we're also put together a budget where the city manager has explained everyone would be getting their merit raises, et cetera. And that's why Bab supported his idea of taking the cost of living off the table for one year. So I wanted to share those numbers because that's pretty significant numbers when you look at the number of bodies that are working to give services to all of our, all of your constituents and my fellow taxpayers. The other, one of the other things that I wanted to bring up, you know, the nonprofits and the contribution that has been increasing over the years in nonprofits. In 2016, we as a city gave $756,000 to nonprofits. This past year, it was 2.2 million. I think as part of all of you have, when you took office, really talked about transparency and transparency in government. And I think that an idea that the city manager brought to Bab last week is a great one, and I wanted to share it with you to get some feedback. He had asked if Bab would consider being part of a subcommittee to review proposals from various nonprofits. There are additional nonprofits out there that haven't been getting funding. And I think there's a, I've heard out in the world, real world, some people are saying, why is this company, why is this group getting this much money? Why is this one getting that much? Who's making those decisions? And I think that going through a sort of a vetting process might be a very good idea. I know that some of you felt that you needed to step back from voting on the budget because of possible being misconstrued, that you were voting for a specific item. But if we put this into some type of a process where nonprofits, not only the ones that are on the current list, but putting it out there to make presentations and, and, you know, and present it to some group like ours, we could then help vet through that and make a suggestion to city commission and to the city manager, maybe the budget's not 2.2. Maybe there's some great things and it needs to go to 3 million. Maybe it needs to go back to 1.5. But I think it's something that for the future, that it's something that we should think about. And I wanted to toss out that idea and get possibly some feedback from some of you if you think that that's something that Bab and the city manager should explore.
Brian, this is Ben. Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I like that idea.
I, I agree, Brian. I like the subcommittee idea and, you know, maybe it's a percentage of our budget or thing, kind of like we're looking at the art space tonight. Maybe we come up with that number. I don't know, will we come up with a number each year, whatever works?
Hey Brian, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
You referenced, I guess, 2016, where we were, and then where we were from last year? Like increased like a million, making something?
Yeah, it was, it went from almost 800 to 2.2. It's about 1.4 million, plus you did homeless initiative, which is a totally different item.
Which I think, I think what you said, all of them as well, I agree with everyone. I also need to, to understand that maybe we shouldn't be doing that if we can't, you know, fund, everybody's asking, not just Robert McKenzie's, you know, pet peeve nonprofit. So that's a big chunk. And I think we're going to face some shortfalls, not this year, but next year, especially by removing the ROI, taking it out of place. And I mean, I just think we threw some money around this year that, because we were trying to put out some fires, and maybe we just don't need to fund some of those, those nonprofits, if not any of them, after you all form that committee and do that. That's a big jump, in my opinion, you know, in giving money to nonprofits when we're the city. And if we had to give money to nonprofits, that's some stuff we probably could use in-house with how Barnes Neighborhood Support, some of the rapid rehousings, some of the initiatives they're doing with, with the homeless, and probably provide a better impact on those persons or those programs that we see fit.
Hey Robert, can I add to that? Ryan, that increase, is that for, are those monies being used towards our capital contributions? For example, to Parker Playhouse and, and also to Jack and Jill? What's, because those are significant increases.
I'll highlight for you, Mr. Mayor, what was in 2020. So for example...
Yeah, because I don't think those are programming. That's not for programming. I think that's for capital expenditures, but go ahead.
Like, for example, the first time in 2020, Stranahan House for 100,000. I don't know, to help residents and visitors learn about the history of the region, there was Winterfest, 75,000, Historical Society, 85,000, the Museum of Arts, 500,000, First Call Help at Broward, 20,000. You know, it, it's quite an extensive list. And I think, you know, in, in creating this transparency that all of you have done an excellent job over the last two years, I think the public, instead of seeing this on a website and saying, well, why is that one? And who's, who picked that one, et cetera, that, you know, for us to team with the city manager to come up with a process that nonprofits know that, hey, Fort Lauderdale has this bucket, and I need to apply, and how are we using it? And get some eyes and ears on it, I think would benefit all of you and all of us as a city in making sure that everyone feels as if they had a fair shot at the table.
So do you think that process should go through the Budget Advisory Board? Because I don't think the city commission wants to participate in a vetting process on, you know, it could be dozens and dozens of applicants. I would think that we would want an advisory board, like we do in other situations, to vet applications and then submit them to the commission. Do you see that as a role for the Budget Advisory Board?
Well, in talking to Chris and to, you know, we, we have an ebb and flow in our Budget Advisory Board, right? I mean, we go from, okay, the new budget has been passed in September. In October, we talk about, you know, what did we learn from the last process? We have sort of a education in November, et cetera. We really crank up then after we've met with you in February. So my thought was, is if we could put into place something that, once they're awarded for that new budget year, to get out there and talk about other people and maybe use some of these low months that we have. So, I mean, it's a brand new idea, Mayor. We just, Chris brought it to our attention last week because we were starting to look at some of these light items and question them. So, I mean, it's really a new thought. So maybe we need additional help as a, an additional advisory, but I think that looking at the numbers and things should follow them back under us, so maybe we have something. But I think it's a great idea that somebody, it needs to be more transparent and it needs to be more public and it needs to be, because these numbers are now getting up to, when you're getting with over 2 million, the perception out there in the community is, is everything. And when you're like, oh, well, cost of living, we're asking to give up at 2.3, but then we're writing $2 million and whatever to nonprofits, it's sort of like, one hand and the other. So I think it's something that I wanted to bring up to all of you, is sort of Bab and, and thinking, you know, this is more of a policy thing and we need to pitch it out to you and see if you think it's something that the city manager and Bab should explore or come up with an alternative or, or suggestion that we have a vetting board or something. So that I thought it was something that needed to be brought to your attention.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Brian? Otherwise, we'll have them continue.
I actually have a question. I want to go back to these adjustments, and maybe I'm just confused, Brian. And I know we're asking to, to hold the line. But in, in all of our collective bargaining bodies, how does this impact all of them in, in terms of their pensions? Did anyone's? Because I mean, we're talking and we're kind of lumping things together in terms of what the city manager's recommendation was. I know we're going to hold the COLA increase, but are pensions being affected here?
No. And Chris, you can answer that. But from, but to answer your question, Commissioner, from Bab's point of view, there was a lot of discussion about the pensions and light items, and we hadn't, the city manager was coming back to us on the old OPEB trust fund that the Bab brought up. So the, the overall feel from Bab was that we need to fund our pensions. We need to fund, we don't need to go behind. And we made that clear along with the fact that we needed to support our, our personnel and give them the tools that they needed. The other department that we felt really had been neglected in the past was the IT department. And I can tell you that the, in this budget, I'm, I'm excited to see that there's an, over an additional million dollars that is going to go funnel into that for some improvements with I, with IT. It's not adding FTEs, it's getting consultants. So Zoom is the new thing, then get some experts on Zoom and get them under contract. We weren't looking to add bodies. And then next week, if there's another new technology, et cetera. So in the past, sort of like we brought up in February, that we were concerned about the infrastructure of non-sewer and water, infrastructure of buildings, infrastructure of technology was one of the other things. And the city manager has shifted some funds into those kind of things. But I don't feel as if there's any, aside from the points that we brought up to the city manager, who's going to get back to us before our next meeting, we already raised some questions in regards to pension.
So my question still was, do any pensions get affected by what we're about to do in the city manager's proposal?
So Brian, let me, let me, do you want me to jump in and take that?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, I want to do that, Chris.
Yeah, let's, so, let's have Tarlisha come on video. And she would be our most qualified person to answer that question. She's been meeting with all of our bargaining units. Tarlisha, can you come help out, please?
Good afternoon. Can you see and hear me?
You see, yeah.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I actually spoke to all of the bargaining agents and mentioned to them what was being proposed by the city manager in direct response to Commissioner McKenzie's question. There is no direct impact to the pension for the employees with the COLA. I did explain that the merits would continue, which is anywhere from 1 to 3% based on the employee's performance. And the only thing that would be at issue is the COLA, which is negotiated across the board at different numbers based on the contracts, because public safety is on a different type of COLA system. So if you're asking directly, is it going to day-to-day affect their pensions? No, but the perspective that I have received from some bargaining agents, that if they don't receive the COLA in the October, with, with the October increase, that there's a possibility that down the road, because of the compounds. But specifically, there is no direct impact. It's only going to be the COLAs that are moving forward for this October.
But you think down the road, it's going to, it's going to impact that? Because I don't, no, I'm not in the weeds. I'm just trying to understand, you know, both sides and try to, try to get to a, a place where I'm comfortable with the budget. But when I hear the rumblings that it's going to impact something, I just want to make sure I'm clear when I'm talking to whether it's Brian's team, or one of the bargaining components, or whomever, that I have good information.
Yes, I'm presenting it to you as it was presented to me from the bargaining agent who had the concern. And the concern is that if they look at it long-term, if you're saying that the employee's pension is based on their income, that's how they can perceive it as an impact. But otherwise, when we looked at all the different scenarios, when we talked about furloughs and other issues, this is the one that would have been least impactful to the employees because based on my conversations with the bargaining agents, which we really didn't get to fully develop, we lost one of our bargaining agents recently. But based on our preliminary discussions, many of them said that they could live with it. It wasn't going to be best, but they could live with the, the COLA reduction because everything that the administration and the city manager has done between March and now to try to maintain the workforce and not have any employees lose any benefits to date. So that was something that was a little bit more palatable.
You say many of them can live with it. Who, who can't live with it?
Well, right now, my final conversation with Glenda was not able to be had because we lost Glenda a couple of weeks ago. And the, the new agent is Dan Reynolds. We did have a conversation briefly, and I explained to him, because I did tell him I did not want him to be blindsided by the information coming out through the Bab or through the manager's presentation to the commission. And he said that he understood. And I told him if he had any questions or concerns, that he would be able to reach out to me and address those concerns prior to the finalizing of the annual budget.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner McKenzie, this is Jimmy Herbst.
Robert?
Yeah.
Robert, any other questions?
I got someone asking me a question. Who is that?
This is John Herbst, Commissioner McKenzie. So to, to, to offer another perspective on that, the multiplier that the pension works off of is based on your highest 24 months of earnings. So any function in future earnings is going to reduce all future pension payouts. So the, the less your final two years of service, the lower that number is, the lower your payments for the entirety of your retirement are going to be. And that's, that's the issue that they're raising. So if you're approaching retirement and your salaries are not going up by the cost of living adjustment, that reduces the base salary for the computation of the pension in perpetuity. So for the next 30 years that you're collecting pension, it will be lower as a consequence of not having the COLA.
How do you suggest, how do you suggest, we deal with this or I digest this?
So I, I think what Tarlisha said makes sense. There are a range of options, all of which are negative to the employees. And I think what he's trying to find is the least negative to the most people. If that makes sense.
So the, so the balance is, instead of laying people off, we're, we're trying to keep everybody employed without having, and, and we're not asking them to take a furlough or we're not asking to take a wage cut, just not giving them the COLA opportunity, but we are allowing them to get the merit raise going forward. That's what I understand.
Right. If, if anything, if you want to look at it this way, it's a spread the pain option. So you could either lay off a few people, or you can have reduced salary increases for a lot of people. Either one of those gets us to the number that the city manager needs to be at. The, the layoffs have a very dramatic impact on a handful of people. The COLA cuts have a lesser impact on a lot more people. So you're spreading that pain across a larger base of people. I think that's probably the best way of looking at it.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Brian, you want to continue?
Okay, well, I'm going to...
Brian, Brian, could I just interject real quick? I think Tarlisha wanted to respond to that before we move on to a different topic.
Yes, the only thing I wanted to say that we do have to, because two of the contracts are already in place, and the COLAs are part of the contract that is subject to negotiation, which we would accomplish with the concurrence of the bargaining agents. We'd have to do an MOU, but two of the other contracts are not finalized yet, and it's still subject to negotiation just across the board. So we want to be clear that it's not a unilateral decision for us at this point. We still have, it's subject to negotiation. I just wanted to make sure that we point that out.
Which, which, which party are we talking about that is not, that, that, which, which, let me rephrase it, which two parties are still subject to negotiation?
Our public safety contracts. Those are the contracts that we, yes.
And what is the other one? Police and fire?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mayor, there's a delay. At this point, our federation and teams of contract are both settled contracts. We would have to enter into an MOU with those bargaining agents. And the police and fire, IEFF and FOP would also, their contracts right now need to be negotiated. But we have already been in talks with both bargaining agents for those units.
Okay, very good. Anything else, Tarisha?
That's it, thank you, Mayor.
Brian?
Okay, those were, those were the big top level items that I really wanted to get in front of all of you today. Chris is going to then go into where we are 2020. And then Stan Tech is going to be making their presentation on projections into 2021. The one thing that I just wanted to leave you all with is that we really looked at as a team into some of the, more of the minutia and some of the weeds that you've asked us in the past. And we're available to discuss any of those one-on-one. Reach out to us or to the city manager or team. I want to thank all the department heads that made all their presentations to BAB and to everyone on the budget director and our city manager that put up with all my challenging questions and follow-ups and follow-ups and follow-ups. So I can be sort of persistent, and I understand that, and I accept that. And they, they went along with it. And I think that the budget as proposed is a very good one at this stage of the game. And I welcome any feedback from any of you, and we'll take this into consideration for our next meeting. I'm going to pass it over to our city manager.
Okay, great, thank you. Chris?
So thank you, Brian, thank you, Mayor. The second agenda item today is a discussion on where we are in our current fiscal year and how we anticipate getting to the end of the fiscal year. Maybe I'll start with the theory that we operated from when we started the discussions. And that was to figure out how we got to the end of this fiscal year with declining revenues and not be able to, or not be forced to dip into our reserves, sometimes what's referred to as our rainy day fund, and how we could present a budget for the next fiscal year that at least started by holding the military flat. And that's, those are two of the assumptions that we, we started our discussions with. And as we sit here today, I can tell you that, that we can get to the end of this fiscal year without dipping into our reserves. And the budget that's presented, while it will be discussed over time, is one that is presented initially without any increase to the military. It would have been easy to go into the reserves and say, you know, we're, we're short this number of dollars in revenue in this year. We're short $34 or $34 million in revenue. And we just looked to the reserve to fund that gap. And we would have lost all the traction that we've gained over the last several years of fiscal prudence, building our reserves to almost 25%, which really puts us in a great position as we need to leverage the bond market or as we go into storm season. We want to make sure that we have, that we weather these crises, these pandemics and hurricane season with sound finances. So let me take you through what we did, or what we're recommending we do. This has come to you already, Commission, in two different memorandums. The first memorandum that you would have gotten addressed just the general fund. The second memorandum that you got addressed all funds. And so this is really just a follow-up discussion to those memorandums that you're already receipt of. If you happen to look at the backup that's provided on the internet, I'll take you to page two of the slides beyond the title page, where we talk about the snapshot of citywide fiscal year 2020 estimated budgetary impact and balancing strategies. What that is, is a graph that shows you in a very quick summary where we think the revenue shortfalls are in, in the different funds between now and the end of the fiscal year. And so based upon an assortment of different reasons, we believe that the general fund has a revenue shortfall of 19 million, the airport fund right at a million, building fund 3.2, parking 2.6 and on. I don't need to read them, you can read them, they're there on the screen and probably have it in front of you. And we said, okay, so those revenues, we believe are declining that much between now and the end of the fiscal year. What are the different ways that we can offset those revenue declines to get us to the beginning of fiscal year 2021? And you can see the recommended mitigation efforts that we have there. And it's one of four different things in each of the funds. Some funds are, you know, share two things, some share, I guess they all share two things, one of them shares, or two of them share one thing. But those mitigation strategies would either come in the form of an operating expense savings, a recognition of unbudgeted revenues, meaning we went into the budget year and now have more revenues than we thought we had, or thought we were going to have at the beginning of the fiscal year, CIP plan adjustments, and then use of any fund balance if we need to use a fund balance. And you can see that we use some fund balance in those funds that are operated as, as enterprise funds, revenue funds, and not out of the general fund. So we'll starting with the, starting with the general fund. We've, we looked and found ways to save in expenditure savings, and I'll show you where those are momentarily, as well as some community investment plan adjustments. And I'll say that's on tonight's agenda. There's a budget amendment on tonight, and it seeks to get us to the end of the fiscal year with a balanced budget. And what it does is it takes projects and provides a bit of realism to them and say, you know, in what year do we truly need the funding? Do we need the funding in this year? Do we need the funding in a future year? Or do we not need the funding at all? And we can discuss that in more detail tonight, but that number is going to match the number that is attached to the budget amendment for tonight. A prime example, and I talked to Commissioner Sorenson about this earlier today, is we had just over $3 million in the EMS substation CIP project. And we're in the process right now of acquiring land for that EMS substation. But there's no way to think that we can have design, bid, built, and operating that station before September the 30th of this year. So it makes sense to move that funding out into a future year when that project may actually be built, as opposed to just carrying it over year to year, because there's really no way, no realistic way that it could be done in this year. There were some investments into the police building that were in the CIP that as we move forward with building a new police headquarters facility, it doesn't make sense to invest in the old one. And so that would be an example of a CIP project that I don't think funding is needed for any longer. And so we went through our current existing CIP and said, what, what projects could we push out to a future fiscal year? Because they just weren't happening now? Or what were items that were nice to have, maybe didn't need to have? And which projects could we say, you know, these don't really make sense for us anymore? They might have made sense five years ago, but based upon the changing condition and now knowing that we're building a new police building, maybe they don't make sense today? So again, we'll go through that, through that tonight. You can see that as we walked through the airport fund, we found a way to make some savings. In the parking fund, we had some unbudgeted revenues and a CIP plan adjustment. That too is on the agenda tonight. In the sanitation fund, we had to use fund balance there. The fund balance was, was sufficient enough to be able to cover it. School crossing guard, we saved some money and had to go into our fund balance. In the water sewer fund, we had unbudgeted revenues that we didn't start the fiscal year with of about $4.5 million. And then our fund balance balanced that fund as well. So it all, we believe that between now and the end of the fiscal year, revenue's down just over 34.1, almost 34.2 million. And the way that we are recommending that we move forward to go from now to September the 30th is finding $8 million worth of savings, recognizing $5.4 million worth of unbudgeted revenues, and making 13.1 million worth of adjustments to our CIP. And very special note to that CAM too, that I want to, that I want to point out to you is that these items will not be dropped from the CIP. They'll just be carried forward without funding until a future fiscal year when they need funding to be able to be completed. And so that's a very different distinction. We always have to use that word abandoned, because that's what the auditor likes, the attorneys like, the charter requires. And so that has to, that nomenclature has to be in there. And unfortunately, it's, it's, it always seems to appear in the headline of Fort Lauderdale abandons projects. And it's because we have to use that terminology. But I want to be very clear that the projects that I'm proposing are not being removed from the CIP, just carried forward if, if they need to happen, carry forward into, into future fiscal year when, when funding is available. One of the bigger balancers is the beach nourishment project. And frankly, the county notified us and said, you don't have to send us a check because we're not, you know, we're, we're just not at that point where we're moving forward with the work. So, you know, it makes sense for us to move that out to when that, the work is actually being done. Questions thus far?
Chris, I have a question. Water and sewer, where you're digging into the fund balance. Explain to me how that differs from the ROI process that we said we were going to discontinue.
Right, so in order to, there were really two opportunities to, to get the water sewer fund balanced, and I didn't want to, you can see, we elected not to look at any of the capital projects that were already programmed for the water sewer fund, because we wanted to keep funding in the infrastructure projects that were currently moving forward, that we felt is at least the recommended way to balance that was to start by recognizing the revenues, but then rather to look towards projects to do away with or push in the future years, was that that was a good use of the fund balance to balance that fund.
Right, but when we say fund balance, are we digging into reserves that were intended for, I'm, I'm, I'm not quite sure even how to phrase the question. When we say we're digging into the fund balance, does that mean we're taking money away from where it was intended to be used from another, for another purpose?
So each of our funds, I think I understand the question. So each of our funds have different requirements for maintaining a reserve. And they relate to number of days, number of months that we have maintained in our, in our, in our reserves, in our, in our fund balance. When we went and looked at each of these different funds, because they do operate in vacuums, and we didn't want to subsidize water sewer from general and vice versa, that to recognize that revenues were down by 6.3 million, that needed to be, that needed to come from somewhere. And thankfully, we had revenues that were exceeding what was budgeted. But, you know, we, there's really two options then, once you, once we made up that gap and had a 1.872 million dollar gap, is to say, let's go look at projects that are in the current fiscal year in the CIP that we could abandon until the next year or the year after that. Or what does the health of the fund balance and could it withstand, you know, are using some of it to get the budget balanced? And the answer to that was, our proposal was to use some fund balance to offset those revenues. We get Laura to come on the line, because she probably is in front of her computer with all of the actual numbers right in front of her. And Laura, the question I would have for you, which I think further would answer the Mayor's question, is water sewer fund balance, where it is, where it is as a percentage of where it is required to be? Can you help us understand those, those two questions with real numbers?
Yeah, thanks, Chris. Laura Reese, Budget Director. I was actually looking for that document as we were speaking, but I can conceptually tell you that 90 days is what we require in water sewer fund. We'll still be above that once we use this, 1.8 million dollars. So I'm looking for the specific numbers, but, but we're still above our minimum required of 90 days after we take this 1.8 million. And again, these are all estimates, so the revenues could come in higher. So businesses back up and going, we could not experience the 6.3 and not have to use the fund balance. We don't actually use the fund balance unless our revenue estimates come true. So.
So, so the, the use of this money is, is going to the place where it was intended to go. In other words, the fund balance money, the 1.872, is going to water and sewer projects, correct?
It's, Mayor, it's not going to projects at all, what we're estimating. And if you go on in the presentation to water sewer, you'll see that based on businesses shutting down, we estimated that water revenues would come lower because those businesses aren't using water. And so we're, we balance the budget, assuming those revenues would come in at a higher level, since they're coming in lower. We either need to reduce an expense or use our fund balance. So we're using our fund balance as part of that solution.
Okay, but, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to make sure I understand, trying to wrap my head around, you know, all the vocabulary, the nomenclature that's being used here. We had decided when we first, when this commission first took office, that we were going to eliminate ROI, which was taking money out of the water and sewer fund to balance the budget. Tell me how that differs here.
Okay, so for return on investment, that was an expenditure to the water sewer fund. So in mid-year and fiscal year 2020, we said, we're not, we're going to stop transferring money from the water sewer fund into the general fund. And you use that expenditure capacity to fund emergency expenses. So the ROI money has already been spent, and we brought you a special budget amendment in March to show you how we spent that funds. There is a lot of emergencies based on the large breaks this year. So the ROI has been spent for fiscal year 2020 in order to meet those emergency expenditure needs.
So how does the 1.872 million differ from taking money out of water and sewer and to balance the budget? Are these going towards water and sewer expenses or to other expenses?
Yeah, it's water and sewer expenses. Really what happens is each year we adopt a balanced budget, and the balance of revenues assume we are going to bring in more from businesses than what we think we're going to do now. So because of COVID, businesses shut down, and we think because of all the businesses that shut down, we're going to get 6 million less than we thought we were going to get. So we're not increasing our expenses, we're just saying we probably are going to need to dip into fund balance because the revenues came in lower. So we're not increasing expenditures at all.
Okay, I think you've answered my question. Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, I have one.
Okay. Yes, sir.
And ask me clarification, because just like you were just inquiring, Mayor, about how we're getting to this balanced budget? In particular, not so much the line item you spoke of, but going back to CIP, maybe John Herbst can help me. And I know Chris said that it didn't mean those projects won't ever get funded, it just means they won't be funded in this planned year or the one or two. My concern is that I may not be here in three and four. Because when I came aboard, there were some, there were some programs in CIP that were land item or not allocated, but they were there in CIP sitting. And until how we did things, in particular ROI, or dipping into the fund balance to do certain things, is when I realized some of the projects that were promised to the community could very easily disappear if there's no commissioner who's handing off the baton to the next person to watch those funds. So I watch them because I'm very cognizant of what was promised before and what I would like to get accomplished moving forward. So I guess one part, you can answer, Chris, is there a published document of all these CIP programs in, in the backup for, for this afternoon's discussion? Or did you talk to every commissioner, you know, about these proposed dipping of funds? And then I'll ask John, part two.
Okay, so Commissioner, the answer to your first question is yes, that, as I indicated, that even though these projects would, would show as though they had lost their funding for this fiscal year, they weren't going to be dropped from the CIP. So there will be a, a paper trail of projects that exist in the CIP, they will just have, until such time as dollars are appropriated back to them, show as zero funding. And answer to your second question, now this is my recommendation to the commission. This is not something I went and asked the commission for feedback on. This is, as your city manager, bringing you a budget recommendation, recognizing that we ended up in a crisis, and I see that revenues are going to be less than what we anticipate them to be. And our budget is just not, you know, it's a big budget, but it's not so big that $34 million. And our budget is just not, you know, it's a big budget, but it's not so big that $34 million is, is just easy to, easy to find. It comes with work and, and an assortment of different mitigation strategies.
Yeah, but I think, I think we as a commissioner, in particular the mayor and I, we knew by adjusting the ROI and taking it out of play, at some point, we'd have to face the music. So I'd much rather know when will I have to face the music? You know, as opposed to, and I could be wrong, these practices, just like ROI, but happening, happening with a different part of money. Just so I can wrap my head around it or understand, you know, how we do these. I mean, how, how can we, how can we cut out 21 million three years ago? And now, you know, that doesn't impact our bottom line. So I, and I'm not the one in, in the room counting the beans, not the one doing the spreadsheets. But at what point are we going to face this 21 million dollar slap in the face?
Well, I don't know that I would characterize it.
Maybe I'm wrong.
No, no.
Totally wrong.
No, but we, we're, we're realizing and facing it today. I mean, we elected in 2020 already, earlier in the fiscal year, to do away with the, with the transfer to the General Fund. So the General Fund in 2020 is 20 million dollars less than it was two years ago. And, you know, we, along the way, showed how we, how we did that. And it was an assortment of ways, I can't, I mean, we could go back and, and go line by line and show you how we got to that 20 million dollars. But no, we're, we've recognized that already and we're, we're, so if there's music to face, I mean, we're, we're facing it now.
Okay, but see now, we're going to be okay. We're going to be all right. We're going to be okay. Well, I don't feel okay. And I'm not doubting anything. I'm just, we're policymakers and we get information as it's presented to us. So you've answered my question. I would like for, for Mr. Herbst and Brian at the end, if you want to, you know, chime in. John, can you help me understand?
So I'll, I'll touch on a couple of points that'll come up during this discussion. So one of the things that the city manager mentioned is that we use the word abandoned. And that's in the city charter, and it actually is there for a reason. Because it forces the commission, the policy setters, to be cognizant of the actions you're taking. Because once something is removed from the CIP plan, as you well pointed out, it may or may not find its way back in. And priorities change on a year-to-year basis with the CIP. When something is no longer funded, and I've seen this during my tenure here with the city, that projects go away and never come back. So it just makes sure that you're aware when you reposition these monies that that project may never see the light of day once again. And it's, and it's important to know that because every year, priorities will change. On an annual basis, we may reconsider something that we thought was important and urgent and find it's neither important nor urgent anymore, or one or the other. The other issue that I think is always concerning, and this is something we'll be looking at when we do our budget review, is having a structurally balanced budget. And that's one where your revenues match your expenditures. And when we look at CIP adjustments, those are one-time monies. And that always concerns us from our perspective, is making sure that we're not plugging holes in ongoing revenues using one-time money. So again, that's something we'll be looking at closely as we do our budget review over the next two months. And we'll bring back recommendations to you about that. But I think your, I think your overall point is spot on with that. You know, at some point, you have to, as you say, kind of pay the piper. And, you know, it's not always a popular decision, but we haven't raised our millage rate in many years. And that is your ongoing significant source of revenue in the budget. So when you're looking to balance your revenue or expenditures, you're either cutting expenses or you're raising the limited number of revenue streams that you are given statutorily to work with. And there's not that many of them. We can't do a lot on the tax side. We can only do so much on the fee side. The only thing that you have that is really a flexible tool within your control that isn't a shell game, as was pointed out, is millage. That's pretty much it. And it, it's, it's, it's hard to dance around that, that singular fact, that that is the way that most governments balance their budget is through tweaking their millage rate.
Because I, I'd rather management tell me no than tell me I'll go get it and we really don't have it, you know? And I just want to be fair to management too. But right now, I feel like it is exactly what we have expounded on in terms of, you know, shell game or facing the music or paying the piper. That concerned me, which is not a consistent factor. It's a, let me go find something that's not being used.
Yes, and, and the one thing I'll say in, in, in terms of what the city manager is trying to do this year is I believe his perspective, and I don't want to speak for him, but I think his perspective is that we are looking at certain one-time hits to our budget right now that may not be recurring in the future. So the impacts that we're experiencing from COVID, I, I think, you know, looking forward optimistically, perhaps we're going to see more of a growth in our property tax base that the millage rate is based on, that that will hopefully come roaring back next year. And that will have some structural reduction in some of our costs if he's able to renegotiate some of our union contracts. So that can bring the budget back into balance. And what we may need, just like we did during the 08, 09, 010 recession, are some one-time patches to get us over the hump. So it really depends on what your longer-term outlook is for the city's revenue and expense structure as to whether this is hiding us over the hump or if we need to do something that puts us in a more balanced position structurally. If that makes sense.
Yeah, I just wanted to get the information out of this, so I appreciate all of you. I don't know if Brian wants to say something, but I think I got what I needed.
As a follow-up, Commissioner, you know, Bab's responsibility is to look at it from a taxpayer point of view. And we're not silly city staff. We're only looking at it from the taxpayer point. You know, I think that the city, the directive of eliminating ROI was the right decision. I mean, obviously, that's what you elected in, is your commitment to eliminating that transfer or rating of the Water Sewer Fund as, as the public was looking at it. I think there was a lot of strategic reductions that happened to that. So we're past that hiccup. So I don't think that there's another thing biting us from the ROI. To answer your question in regards to CIP adjustments that Chris has listed here in 2020, it's sort of to the point where this, the, his example of the substation south of the river. I mean, it, to have $3 million sitting in there when we know realistically, we're not going to spend more than a million two or whatever it costs to buy the land to take part of that. So I think that's part of the 11.5. I don't have the sheet in front of me, but I know that the city manager and the budget director showed us those line items by CIP. And it was really not throwing the projects completely away. It's like, this is where we're at and this is how much it's going to cost us in actual expense between now and the end of September. So that leaves some additional funds, so let's balance the budget because we know we're not going to spend the fund. But that's how it's explained to me. But we raised the same question you did, Commissioner.
But, but again, and, and that's a good point. Let's take that, that facility, right? I've never seen anything, Mayor, that we did in construction. By the time we built it, that came in at the number that we said it's going to come in at. So that's, those are my concerns. How can we guarantee a year and a half from now, construction costs?
We can't. We're only doing one budget a year. And we can't anticipate two years. We know that. I, I'm telling you, as a budget chair currently, I think there's going to need to be a major abhorment in 2022. That's my gut telling me. I don't think that there's low-hanging fruit anymore. These strategic reductions we've been doing the last couple of years with our new city manager, that I'm very creative and is there. I'm saying this is not the year for an abhorment increase. What's the economy in this city? But I can tell you that just as a layman person, not working for staff, as a volunteer, I am very skeptical of being able to say to you honestly, as a member of Bab next year, that we're probably going to be looking at abhorment increase. That's my gut.
And I'm skeptical as well. So thank you so much for your honesty, everyone, even, even administration. I appreciate it. But just wanted to make sure that we are aware, you know, of what we're walking into. We may pass the roof today, but we're going to have to fix the roof or repair it completely before it comes following our heads. But thank you anyway. Thank you for the information.
Chris, can you, not, not necessarily now, but at some point, give the members of the commission a detailed breakdown of what CIP projects are going to be deferred to, to other years?
I can. Yeah, that's, that's what's on the agenda tonight. So that'll be part of the budget amendment tonight. It goes project by project. It's, it's a handful.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions with the city manager?
Yeah, if I, I'm probably not, not going to continue with slides in this, in this item because we really covered the numbers there. Yeah, that was a, a very natural segue into revenue sufficiency because we do study revenues and make, make very educated and informed decisions based upon real numbers known and anticipated through 10 years. And so if we turn it over to the third item, it's our, it's a presentation with StanTech. They're the ones that have worked with us for years now in doing our revenue sufficiency so that we can answer questions, just like Commissioner McKenzie would bring up with other members of the commission, on what's the next year look like and what assumptions have you made? And how are you planning for not only this year, next year, but five years and 10? You know, we're not doing any of these things in a vacuum. And, and I like the, the chair recognized that this might have been our last year when we don't have to come forward with some sort of a, of a, at least a, a budget that shows a millage rate increase in it, not, not knowing what that is, but we do see that on the horizon at some point. So Kyle and Andrew, I think, are both on the phone, are both on the call. This revenue sufficiency study deals with fiscal year 2021 and how, how the revenues are projected based upon the budget that's presented. But then they can also speak to some of the other things we're seeing on a trend as we look out over multiple years. Who's taking on this presentation? Is it Kyle?
Yeah, I was just going to, Chris, this is Andy. I was just going to give a few kind of overview remarks to build on what you just said. And then let Kyle start going through each of the individual funds, one by one.
Does that work for you, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay.
Perfect. So just by way of an agenda on the next slide, if we could, you know, we've outlined the, the same types of funds that we update each year as part of this process. The General Fund, airport, building permits, parking, regional sewer, the retail water and sewer funds, dorm water and sanitation. And for a couple of these funds, we were intending to have the models available, particularly for the General Fund and Water Sewer, so that to the extent that we wanted to look at alternative scenarios or dive into the forecast a little bit more detail and understand some of the assumptions and timing of the, the roof replacements or repairs, if you will, be able to look at those things in, in real time and have some discussion around those. As we get into each of these topics, we're going to go one at a time, start with the General Fund. Go to the next slide real quickly. I think the city manager did a great job of, of setting up the why in terms of why this is an important part of putting a telescope on your current year budget process. It really allows us to look both forwards and backwards to understand how is our 2020 budget looking and preliminary budget for '21 versus prior year forecast? How are our costs trending in these budgets versus prior assumptions? So we can continue to true up those future escalation factors to reflect our actual trends and changes, integrate the most current capital improvement programs that we can take into account changes in the timing of projects or their costs, or both. And to factor in changes in economic conditions. In this case, we have some very real and acute impacts associated with COVID-19 that have, as the city manager's outlined, impacted all the different funds in different ways. Process interactively with staff really helps us to understand the short-term, midterm, and long-term impacts of some of the changes in our assumptions, in our variables, do some sensitivity tests to really understand the longer-term impacts of these current year decisions that we're making. So it's, it's really an important part of the process. And I think all the prior discussion that I'm having is really set up this discussion very well because we're trying to provide a really good framework for you to be able to understand those longer-term impacts, to understand the range of your decision alternatives, and to be able to make sure that you're able to operate not only into next year, but into beyond in a manner that's sustainable and meets your level of service expectations that you have and constituents have. And so adding this each year to the budget process really helps us keep the long-term in mind while we go through current year budget decisions. So Kyle, he served as our project manager for the modeling several years for all these funds. Jacob Silas is the analyst who's been doing a lot of the number crunching at Kyle's direction. And so I'd like to turn it over to Kyle to kind of start stepping us through one at a time, each of the different funds that we've looked at, starting with the General Fund, outlining some of the key issues, sensitivities that we've looked at. And in some cases, go interactively into the model that many of you've seen in the past. Or in other cases, going through a screen capture of it to facilitate maybe a more accelerated discussion where there's less moving parts. You wouldn't mind if I like to turn it over to you?
Absolutely, Andy. Thank you for the intro, and we'll get started with the General Fund. Jacob, if you'd go to the next slide. What I'd like to do is key up some of the mechanics of each fund with a slide before we actually get into the model as a screenshot. And it's just kind of the assumptions that we've put into the forecast on a go-forward basis. So with regards to the General Fund, there's quite a few of these. With the fire assessment, the city's had a practice in the past of full cost recovery. And so when we find that the cost of fire goes up, usually every three years or so, we true up those costs. You did that last as a commission this fiscal year that we're in currently. We've continued that practice into the future every three years. In addition, there's a number of community redevelopment areas within the city limits. What we have done is programmatically put in the sunsets for those CRAs such that the tax increment financing falls off. So the first one for the central redevelopment is in FY '21. We're estimating that to be about $3.7 million transfer. And then we have the Northwest Progresso in FY 2026. In addition, we've added in some O and M costs. So when those CRAs go away, we're expecting that the General Fund potentially has some increased O and M and maintenance costs. We've started to put plug numbers in there to forecast those expenses. City's annual required pension contribution from a planning perspective, we continue to forecast reductions in the assumed rate of return. The number here on the slide is about 1.8 million per year. I believe the updated number from when this was published for the General Fund is about $1 million. And the last bullet point on this slide, a new EMS station. So we talked about that last year. We've moved that right now for staffing purposes, 850K to FY '22. Jacob, if you want to move to the next slide, we'll cover just the last few ones on the General Fund. For the Joint Governmental Center, we have added a placeholder in for $4 million in operational cost for FY '25. For the discussion on the General Fund, or, or on the return on investment, and what we have assumed as we go through this, that the ROI as of this fiscal year 2020 is no more. That is a revenue to the General Fund, so that revenue is gone in this particular one. And then from a capital investment perspective, about just a few movements. Beach Renourishment has been moved to FY '22 through FY '24. It's about 3.3 million a year. Southeast Medical Substation, 1.8 million moved to FY '21. And that is a 1.2 million in project for land purchases in FY '20. So with that, Jacob, if you'll go to the next slide, what I'd like to do is get this out of a PowerPoint. And Jacob, if you can pull up the interactive General Fund, we can take a look at the fund interactively. Is this Jacob's screen we're looking at right now?
I think you have to unshare your screen to allow me to.
Okay, there you go, Jacob.
All right. Perfect. Can you guys see the screen?
We can. So, so what we've done now is, is instead of a static PowerPoint, this is a live model. And this is what we go through when we build this each and every year. So we start from the ground and put these assumptions in, and then ground truth the assumptions and the modeling platform with the staff that knows the system the best. And so in the General Funds case, what I figured I'd do is just kind of calibrate us to how these models work and then show you some of the sensitivities and testing that we do with regards to the General Fund. And so just from an orientation standpoint, this is a cash flow model. So it's really fundamentally concerned with balancing revenues and expenditures. And Jacob, if you'll just move your mouse down to that revenues versus expenditures chart to the right. We're going to be looking closely at that one, which the black line is the cash in, and the orange line is the cash out. And what we typically have within a forecast like this is an assumption And what we typically have within a forecast like this is an assumption for the expenses within your budget that you're going to see increases in the future, typically related to just the cost of doing business. You also have capital improvement that you're funding out of this that we've incorporated. And then off to the left of that graphic, we have the year end fund balance. And so the blue bars are showing us what we're projecting at the end of each fiscal year. The black line is our stated policy target, which is twenty five percent of operations and maintenance expenditures. And so the way this works is very similar to your own checking account. If you're spending more than you're taking in, it's gotta come from somewhere, and so it's coming from fund balance. And so with the current projection that we have in right now, uh that's up on your screen, is we've held the millage rate flat. So Jacob, if you go up to the top, you can see the millage rate here is is held uh flat at the four point one one nine three. Uh, but then underneath there, we've made assumptions with regards to the taxable value. So kind of these two dynamics interrelate pretty heavily. How much are we taxing property value? And then how much is that changing from year to year? And that's what I'm gonna come back to in one second as I I put some different scenarios into that. Um, what you can see down below, just highlighting the fire increases, uh Jacob, you can see every three years that we have inputted in here an increase in the fire assessment. And this is essentially a projection that says as those costs increase, we're gonna wanna true those up and make sure we're at full cost recovery. And that'll change on the exact timing of that when those costs uh in- increase and and we make those decisions. But for the current projection, what we've got, if it was a status quo, I've put in the taxable value increases at about five percent on a go forward basis. Um, in twenty twenty, they were about seven point three, and the latest number from the property appraiser for twenty one is about five point three percent. So we've just continued out a five percent increase. And what that shows is down below that without any millage increase and given the revenues and expenditures contained within your FY twenty one budget as proposed, uh that would show a a a growing deficit. And you can see the fund balances have a downward trajectory, meaning that we're spending in each and every year forward more money than we're bringing in. And so that fund balance would go below your target and and ultimately at the end of the forecast period there in twenty thirty, if nothing was done, uh, it would be out of money in the general fund from a balance standpoint. So one question might be, well, what happens if the taxable uh value increases on our real property is a little bit different than the status quo? And so Jacob, what I'd ask you to do is let's just look at a sensitivity of maybe moderating that. And so for this scenario, Jacob's gonna change that. And when he updates the model, it's gonna bring in a new property assumption where we're looking at an FY twenty two essentially holding property values flat in twenty three, three percent, four percent in twenty four, and then going to five percent out from there. And so kind of a little bit of a of a of a flat and then picking back up as we go into the twenties. And what that does is if we go back to that year end fund balance, holding all other assumptions the same, that would cause us to go through our fund balance quicker. And so without that additional revenue from taxable value growth, we would be out of money by twenty twenty six. And you could see we'd be significantly below our stated fund balance target um right into twenty twenty two. Now, Jacob, if you would put in just the last taxable value scenario, let's just take it if there's a little bit more of a dip. And um I don't I don't pretend to have a crystal ball. It's probably pretty pretty muddy right now as far as what the future trajectory looks like. But this just gives you an idea of how sensitive the general fund is. And so in this particular case, um what we've done is an actual decrease in taxable value, five percent, three percent in twenty three, and then a recovery on twenty four forward. And what that would mean, if that were to come to light, it means that your general fund balances would see an even sharper decline uh all else equal, um and out of balance by twenty twenty four. And so I'll ask Jacob to kind of put it back to the status quo scenario as far as taxable value. But I just wanted to give you that um thought process and identify how sensitive the general fund is. So the next question or or next scenario you you may want to ask is, given that we're on, even at the status quo, a downward trajectory, what would it take uh from a millage solution to solve this? And so Jacob, I'd ask, uh if you could unhide your controls for millage, um let's just look at in FY twenty two and step up to a solution of what it would take to balance uh on a on a go forward basis. And so maybe a half a mil to start, and then we can plug that in and see exactly uh what that future would hold. So that's probably a little bit too much. And so if you pull that down just a little bit, uh let's go about point four. So right in that range, you could probably pull it down a little bit more, and it would balance in the outer years at point three. But that's got a pretty generous um status quo property ta- taxable value increase of those five percents again. So about a point three if we had that five percent growth in there. Um, if Jacob, if you bring us down to our moderate level of taxable value, um being the the holding flat in twenty two, let's take a quick look at what that would do um as far as the millage. And so with a point three millage and no taxable value growth in twenty two, we would again see some of this downward trajectory. So let's Jacob just up that slightly. Let's take it to half a mil in twenty two to see how that balances the equation with that new taxable value we've been put in there. So what that would do is if you had a half a mil, uh with that property uh taxable value assumption, that would essentially hold it to the uh identified reserve target out to the outer years of this projection where you could say, making another adjustment. Um, or as that future comes into more view, um true up exactly what that would look like. And so with that, you know, number of scenarios I just went through, I guess I wanna pause for a second, make sure if there's any questions of anything I presented or any scenarios that you maybe have you in your mind that you'd like to see, we'd be more than happy to plug those in um into this equation and show you what it would look like.
Anyone have any questions so far?
I have a quick question.
Keep going. Oh, yes, Ross.
I I'm not sure if you can even do this now, but what if you progressively increased the millage, let's say ten basis points per year for the next four years? I I and if that's too much to do, then?
No, we could we could absolutely put that right in. But Jacob's put in a point one mil uh each year for the next four years to twenty twenty five. And so you can see that new trajectory is underneath our target, but a slower rate of decline. And so Jacob, maybe if you put it at point two each year, uh just to kind of step up to a solution with that phased in plan, we could see what that looks like. So there you go with that plan. You can see we dip a little bit, um if we did point two a year in the twenty three, twenty four area. But as we get to twenty five forward, we would have sufficient cash flow to rebuild our reserves and be very much uh close to that twenty five percent of operating expenses.
Well, that's assuming all things are equal, you know, assuming no other un- unforeseen expenses. Also, it assumes no new construction, correct?
It, you're absolutely correct, Mayor. The best way to think about this is we're trying to show the projection of current day decisions with the information we have right now.
Right. So so, you know, projects will continue to be built in downtown, and so that will obviously increase our revenue without having to increase millage rate. Um, okay. Any other questions, Ross? You okay?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so continue.
Okay, perfect. Jacob, if you would, if you could pull up the presentation. Or I can pull it up on my screen. Let's see.
Giving me heartburn, Kyle.
All right. Uh, so the next one we'll we'll talk about is the airport fund. Uh, and if you want to progress to the next slide, uh Jacob, just jump into the assumptions that we have here. Perfect. So just key planning observations on the airport. Uh, there is a transfer that has historically occurred between the general fund to the airport fund. It's a source of revenue for this fund. Uh, it was for a purchase of land uh with a term of about ten years. Uh, it's about one point three million a year. And so it's something we've been watching on an ongoing basis that we know will drop off in the future in FY twenty four, and we've been planning for it proactively. Uh, additionally, as mentioned, uh when the city manager brought up his slide with regards to COVID impacts, uh, there are some COVID impacts in the airport in the form of rent deferrals uh from FY twenty to FY twenty one. We have forecasted that at about eight hundred thousand and twenty three dollars that will move from one fiscal year to the next. And then one of the conversations that we always have when we talk about the airport with staff is in regards to any new revenue opportunities, recognizing that the majority of revenue at the airport is either fuel, aviation leases or land leases. One of the ones that was identified for us this year was a joint public works facility uh that would be slated to begin paying revenue to the airport fund of about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in FY twenty twenty three. And so we've assumed that in our analysis. If we move to the next slide, I'll show you a screenshot of the the model that we put together. And so in this particular screenshot, what I want to highlight is just a couple items for you. Uh, from the operating fund perspective off to the left, very similar to on the general fund, this is a uh position at the end of the year as far as balances. This particular fund is healthy, so it has fund balances at or above its designated target. You can see in the middle graphic, the revenues versus expenditures, again, we have the black line being cash in, the orange line being cash out. The thing to notice here is when we get to twenty twenty four, you can see that sharp decline in the black line where it starts to move into alignment with the cash out. That's that transfer I just mentioned. And so as that transfer disappears, we're expecting a decrease in some of the cash flow into this fund. But it will be almost balanced with the cash out in that particular year. And so this fund is looking healthy to absorb that kind of structural uh change that we foresee in the future. And this uh currently uh has the fully funded CIP in. And so no concerns from a sustainability perspective on this fund on a go forward basis, uh and it can continue to operate.
Kyle, any question? Any question? Any question from anybody?
Yes, Mayor, I have one question for Kyle. It's Steve.
Yes, please.
Kyle, what, could you just explain why the huge jump from twenty four to twenty five in terms of the uh CIP spending and the CIP funding grants fund? Why that huge dip and then that huge spike between those two years?
Yeah, absolutely. We could pull the exact projects. Um, to my recollection, there is um a number of grant funded projects between uh DOT and the FAA. Um, they're typically related to repaving, I believe, in in the current CIP. And so we have put in the current adopted CIP or the projected CIP going from twenty uh forward. And the projects are kind of designated in each of those years. And they're really, they really are contingent on that grant funding and ensuring that that funding source uh comes to help out with those projects.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, keep going.
So if we move to the next fund, we have the special revenue fund, the building fund, uh and we can keep moving on to our key planning and assumption slide. So a couple of key observations here. So the fund just had a recent rate study that's realigned the fees and changed some of the mechanism by which fees are charged and the revenue level generated. One of the more impactful things, though, is my second point here, which is House Bill four four seven. And what this did is effectively put new limits on the amount of balance that can be held within this fund. Uh, specifically, we may not carry a fund balance uh in excess of the average of the four fiscal years. And so this puts um some pretty different limits on how much money we can put in. So instead of a minimum, it's really a maximum amount of fund balance that we can carry going forward. Additionally, we've assumed that there's a transfer of building ownership from the general fund. And then there's a possibility that's included currently in the analysis of a land sale, land sale from the sanitation fund in FY twenty one. That would be a use of this fund uh resources of about two million dollars in that year. And so if we go to the next slide, we'll look at the dashboard. And what we have here is in the operating fund, you can see there's a little over fifteen million dollars, very close to that black line, which we have now synced up with that house legislation. So it's a rolling average of the four years of expenses. So you can see it's kind of got an upward trajectory. And the way we're trying to manage this fund is to make sure in each and every one of those years, we're just slightly below that target or right at that target, because we don't want to be in breach of that legislation. Uh, what that would mean and what we've projected in here is likely in the short term, uh those balances will be slightly below the target, especially with the purchase of land from sanitation, which is denoted on the bottom charts of this graphic, the two million dollars. Um, if it were to carry forward into the future, in the top section of this graphic, you can see in FY twenty three, currently I've got a ten percent increase in revenue in there for building permits and re inspections. And what we're fundamentally saying here is every uh so often, three or four years, it's likely that you'll have an additional study that will look at truing up your permits to make sure that those fees are in alignment with the underlying expenditures. As we show inflationary pressure in this fund, we've just calculated in FY twenty three, a likely timing and a likely magnitude uh that would correspond with that rate study to true up those costs if you saw inflation uh at the levels we're expecting going in the future. And so from a sustainability perspective, as long as those studies uh continue in a timely manner and continue to true up the cost uh to the revenues coming into the fund, we would expect this to be sustainable and in alignment with the new legislation from a fund balance perspective. If we move on to the next?
Any any questions? There being none, continue, please.
Absolutely. So the next one we'll talk about is the parking fund. And if we go to our key planning and assumptions, a number of moving parts here. And so um for two years, we've had to spend down a fund balance for the Los Olas garage. So as we've built that garage, we've been funding it with cash, which means we've used approximately fourteen million dollars in total from fund balance. Um, our CIP additionally assumes for this year, some R and R funding in twenty one uh forward. And what the what this is essentially, we've added in some CIP projects to assume that you have ongoing maintenance and repair of structures that you have in place, and there's some costs associated with that. And so we plug that into the model. From a revenue perspective, a number of changes. So there's an anticipated new zonal structure uh that would go into place, uh go into a a effectively into place July first. Uh, from our understanding, that would generate about seven point one million in new revenue annually. We've also anticipated that, given it's gonna happen in this fiscal year, you will receive some additional revenue of about nine hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we've also assumed the Riverwalk Garage is going to uh remain underneath city operation. Uh, from the Los Olas garage to beach parking, we've assumed that there will be uh some additional activity there for two months in FY twenty one due to the aquatics complex reopening, which will be fully in FY twenty twenty two. And then additionally, as we talked to the staff, one of the newer assumptions that we've included is as your urban core expands, we believe there may be some opportunities for additional metering revenue and metering that would be installed. So we've just put some small adders in there for that metering revenue in future years. So if we go onto the next slide, with regards to the panel, uh in the left side is the operating fund balance. And what you can see there is the fund balance in nineteen is a little above ten million. But as we continue to pay for that parking deck, you can see the fund balance go down to a little over three million dollars in FY twenty. Now, from a projection going forward, when we look at the operating versus uh O and M versus revenues, which is a black and the orange lines in the middle, you can see the upward tick from twenty to twenty one on the black line. That is representative of the new zonal fee structure and the new revenue levels it would generate. And what that fundamentally does is gets you from a sustainability perspective into alignment with regards to your cash in and cash out. You can see those two lines are almost on top of one another. This would then allow you to fully fund your capital program that we have in here and meet your fund balance targets in each year. And so very different picture than the picture we showed last year, which um you couldn't fund CIP at your current revenue levels. You were barely funding operations. With those rate increases, you can fully fund and you have a sustainable parking fund on a go forward basis. So any questions on this fund?
Okay, proceed.
Perfect. So the regional sewer fund uh will be the next one we'll talk about, which is uh the regional wastewater fund, GTO, which encompasses uh five different uh communities, Fort Lauderdale being the biggest. Um, the main uh assumption that we update each year is the new renewal and replacement contribution. This is a analysis that occurs annually per the large user agreement that looks at the twenty year needs of the regional wastewater system as far as renewal or base uh replacement, the investments that need to make uh be made in the system. And so that gets updated each year. This is one of the funds additionally that will be affected by the ROI phase out. This was an expense to this fund, uh roughly four point two million uh in total before it was phased out. I, that will reduction, though, has been largely offset um by increases in CIP and a cor- uh corrosion inhibitor chemical feed program project. An additional assumption that we've included in here is the last time the city borrowed, you did a two hundred million dollar issue in fiscal year eighteen uh for the consent order program, after the fact, we realized that a number of those proceeds uh needed to be spent in the regional fund. And so what we've assumed on a go forward basis uh from a planning perspective is in FY twenty three, we have that additional kind of two hundred million. And in FY twenty eight, kind of every five years, it's been the planning parameter for that. We've just assumed now that the regional has some part in that, and they're using some of those proceeds. We've estimated that to be roughly thirty million dollars when those bond projects happen. So if we go to the next slide, we can look at the panel here. And the real key concept for this particular fund is the contract guides the rates here. And each year they are calculated per a formula that trues them up to cost. And so if I look at uh the revenues versus expenditures, uh you can kind of see in that middle graphic where you can kind of see in that middle graphic where right on top of each other and each, each year, and which is why you're only seeing the orange one. But I think one of the key things to point out here is that in 2020, you had a number of expenses that came up. They were unplanned emergency type expenditures. So what you're seeing there is that bar, that cash out is much higher than what we had budgeted and what we have on a budget projection going forward. So you can see it kind of dropped down there with regards to the cash out for those one-time expenses. And then from a trajectory up top, you can see that it's kind of an inflationary increase as O and M costs are expected to increase on a go forward basis. Now, the one key thing to know here is that these rate increases, and Fort Lauderdale being the largest contributor of wastewater to this central regional system, pays the largest revenues into this or pays these rating increases on the water and sewer fund that we'll talk about next. So this fund is fundamentally self-sustaining from a projection period on a go forward basis per those large contracts. And the takeaway here is that we expect right now, with all the data we have, just inflationary levels of increases in the bulk wastewater rate.
Okay, sounds good. Next one.
So if we move to the next one, water and sewer fund, we've got a couple of key observations here. So minimum reserve target. So for this particular fund, we're looking to hold three months of operations and maintenance on hand. That's been a really critical thing, given some of the unplanned expenses that have happened in the past. When we've updated this, it has been below. What we'll see in the current projection is we're very much in alignment with that three-year, three months of operations and maintenance expenses. From a capital investment standpoint, we have been targeting $20 million of cash funded capital annually. And so this is $20 million from rates that essentially fund capital. And then in addition to that, as I mentioned when we were talking about regional, we've also kept a planning assumption that on a go forward basis, every five years, you would do a larger bond issue that would allow you to get proceeds and do a higher level investment than would otherwise be able to be done just using cash. And so what we have projected is 170 million in 2023 and '28. That is reflective of the 200 million overall if you combine water, sewer and regional. So we've just lowered this to be 170, recognizing that 30 is in the regional. And then from an ROI phase out, again, this fund is affected by that phase out. It's an expense to this fund. It has been phased out now as of this fiscal year. Before the phase out, it was roughly $16.2 million annual expense. Again, those reductions have helped us meet increases in CIP and central regional expenses, the increase in past central regional expenses that come to this fund. And then in additional, one of the things that I want to show you is a new water plant scenario. I know the city is looking at its water plant replacement. We've received some cost numbers with that. And what we'd like to do is go to the interactive model on this one, much like we did on general fund, and just show you the trajectory of the status quo and then show you conceptually what these planning numbers look like for the water plant. And so if we go to that, we're going to pull up Jacob's screen real quick. Just pop over to the water model. So what, what we've got here on this particular fund is your water model with all of our updated projections in it. Real quickly, from a rate standpoint, up top, as Jacob highlights the two plans, we have a water plan and a sewer plan. As of the 2018 rate study, we made some modifications to the rate structure. So we didn't actually do a revenue increase in FY2020. But for every year going forward, the historical policy is an indexing policy of roughly 5% of overall revenue increases for this fund. That has been split 3.6% on water, 7% on sewer in recognition of cost of service findings from the rate study completed in 2018. So point being, that gets you about 5% overall. When we look at the current outlook, if we go to the revenues versus expenditures chart in the middle, that would keep us pretty much in alignment with where we need to be to keep up with costs and also to take on those additional debts of roughly $170 million when we issue the bonds. And so down, if Jacob goes to the CIP funding chart or right over there, you can see in FY23, those red points that are on this chart, those are representative of those revenue bond issuance that provide additional monies for larger investments on the system in FY23 and '28. And this shows that this would be a sustainable plan going forward that would provide for not only the minimum balances in the operating fund in each and every year, but also a sufficient amount of coverage. So when we go out to the bond markets, bondholders want to make sure we can repay those bonds, and we need to have a sufficient amount of revenue to guarantee those. So our coverage in each and every year is exactly where we want it to be. So what I'll ask Jacob to do for this particular fund is now just enter in the water plant scenario. And what we've done is just added in cost on two levels for this to just show you what this starts to look like. And so the current scenario that we understand it is $432 million, $1 million for the plant's construction. We've included it here in kind of the traditional manner that a utility would look at that, which would be kind of bond funding it. We've also included the operational impacts of that particular facility. And so now that Jacob's entered it into the analysis, we can now see in 2025, there's a larger bond issuance that wasn't there before. And so that is representative of that full project amount that we would need to borrow to construct this. And if we look at the operating fund, Jacob, if you can scroll your mouse right over that, what that would mean is if we keep this level of revenue increases static, which is roughly 5% on annum, when we have that bond go out for the water plant in 2025, we would be slightly below our fund balances. And then in 2026, when that full debt service hits, that would likely deplete all of our fund balances. And this chart shows it in a negative trajectory in '27 forward. And so essentially, at the current rate levels and increase levels forecasted into the future, this utility would not be able to sustain that kind of debt issuance to fund that without a change in the rate level in that year to realign the revenues with the new expenditures to repay the principal and interest on that debt. And so Jacob, if you could come in up top and just override the rates to kind of show us what that would look like, if you could take the 3.6% out. Since it's a water type project, we can put the rating creep on the water side. And if Jacob calculates the model, it will show the updated impact of what the revenues would need to be just in time in order to provide for a sustainable repayment of that debt and also the coverage on that debt. And so layers in essentially over two years there. And if Jacob, if you just add those two up roughly, it's about a 30% increase or so over that, that two-year period. And what that does is in the middle graphic, Jacob, if you just slide your cursor down, what you can see is we've got this upward trajectory and a kind of a stair step, if you will, on the expenses and revenues. And so that 30% allows us to essentially get our revenues back in alignment with the new expenditures to pay back that debt service. And so Jacob, if you could put 35% in that year, 2025, right above, just to put that in one year, that could be particularly one scenario. And if you do 5% after that, Jacob, what we like to call that is kind of the just-in-time scenario. Now, that particularly, it can be a rate shock to customers of an increase of that level. So the only, the other scenario that commonly is asked when we bring up these kind of generational investments that we have in the future is once the city has a really firm idea of the cost and the particular timing of this project, one thing that could be done would be to layer, layer the increases slightly forward such that instead of a 3%, 3.6% in 2022, we could begin to ramp up the revenues so that it would be a levelized plan instead of 35% in 2025. And so Jacob, I'll ask you just to go forward and begin to increase those increases in 2020. And I believe it's 9% or so, somewhere in that level on an annual basis for those four years would start to bring us into alignment. And so what Jacob's done now is he's overriding, the model's going to calculate this through as the screen goes back and forth. What we've done is just on the water side, we've upped the revenue increases to be 9.5% on annum instead of the 3.6%, which would begin to slowly readjust the revenues, given that we have some time before that water plant would be projected to come online, such that when that new debt service comes online, we have the revenues to meet it. And so this updated plan that he's just run now that's done calculating would just start to give you an idea if that plant happened at that level in 2025. About 9.5% or so would give you a levelized plan that by 2025 would give you the revenues you need to pay back the principal and interest on that debt. And so I'll stop, stop with the scenarios I've run and just if there's any questions on this, be happy to talk about them.
Any questions so far? Keep going. Well, you know what? We got to finish this meeting in like 10 minutes, so. Brian, do you have a question? You have to unmute yourself, Brian.
Yes, Mayor. Real quick question. We've, you know, seen from the, from city news out to the public that not talking about the water plant and talking about the current water sewer and infrastructure. And the soundbite has been, we're going to be spending $600,000 on water sewer fixes, improvements, infrastructure over the next five years. Your slide here is showing me only the original 200 million, a 30 million, and then a 170 in '23. So where we can't, coming up with the PR soundbite of $600 million is going into infrastructure.
So I would take you from, from. Brian, you want me to try to take a stab at that? I mean, I think that's what we're, so we talk about $200 million right now in sewer. That's the, that's the work that's being done related to the consent order that Hayes and Sawyer is doing. We've got a $200 million commitment to doing stormwater work. And I don't know what would get us to that six. You know, there's obviously some work being done in the parks.
It doesn't need to be answered now. I'm just trying to be a watchdog for us as a city with the, what is going out to the public. And we're saying one thing, and I'm seeing something else on, on a screen. And then my other concern is for, for budgeting is that, you know, to, to shock anybody with a 35% in one year, I would be really wanting to ramp it up over time, knowing when that's going to take place. That's, that's all.
Absolutely agree with you. And that's why this model is so important, that when we had our revenue sufficiency meeting prior to this meeting, that's where some of these concepts were, were borne out during that meeting of how do we get there without having to do a 35%? Because you're right, that, that likely is not a, doesn't go over well.
No, and I just want to make sure that we're tying in our numbers going forward, what we're saying to the public, because in past administrations, we said one thing and we funded another. So that's just my point.
The other thing I want to highlight before we move on is this contemplates us, us owning the implementation of a new water plant and owning our own destination. So, you know, we've heard different concepts out there about people who might want to come in and make a proposal to build it for us, and then it's financed over a longer period of time, and we make different types of availability payments. Those are all great concepts to talk about as they maybe come in the door and we, and we discuss them. But I wanted to have a firm baseline of what it would look like for us, with nobody else influencing our activities, to be able to say to the public with confidence that we're moving forward in response to the Corolla report in, in bringing a new, a new water plant to Fort Lauderdale. You'll see in the budget that's presented tonight, there's funding that's asked for to bring an owner's rep on board to move a water plant forward. And these discussions now on building the revenues so that we can do it without assistance is certainly on top of mind. So I just want to highlight that as, as, as we talk about water sewer funds and, and a new plant.
Chris, I have a question real quick about water and charging people on the user rates. I should ask a policy type question?
Of course.
Okay, so help me understand this, because I've been dealing with water now for a couple of years. So when we say, obviously, we service, you know, different cities in terms of water, what is it, seven different cities? So we.
Cities or port or, you know, there's, it's not all technically cities, but yes, extra, extra consumers.
All right, so we also, we are saying we are increasing our rates, maybe 5% a year for water and 7% for sewers. Let's just focus on water, because we are projecting maybe going up 10% a year for water to build this Five Ash. But in terms of raising our rates, the 10% a year to build Five Ash, we are only talking about raising the rates for the city of Fort Lauderdale ratepayers because we actually sell our water in bulk to those seven different cities. So we don't, when we say we're raising our rates, we're actually not raising our rates for the different cities we're servicing because we are capped already at what we can charge them, correct? Based on that 20%, 5% surcharge that we already charge them on the water. So I think when we're talking about this, this rate increase, I believe it's only to the city of Fort Lauderdale ratepayers. So my question would be, if we're only charging this to the city of Fort Lauderdale people, is there another way we could cover the cost of the, you know, 400 million for Five Ash in terms of, when we are discussing millage increases next year possibly, could we pay for Five Ash via millage as opposed to water rates? Because, well, so let's back up and help my understanding. Are we only talking about raising the water rate for the city of Fort Lauderdale water users?
We have a varied rate structure based upon who we sell water to. And probably the best is either Laura Reese or Kyle Stevens, who's unmuted to. Kyle's very intimately aware of our water rates since we just have studied and restructured those. Can either of you give, give the commissioner the very technical answer here?
I'd be happy to add some context to it. So in regards to the rate increases that we're talking about on the screen in front of you, that's an overall level of increase that would be applied uniformly to each and every customer class, including what's commonly referred to in your city as the master meter class, which includes those ports and extra jurisdictional cities. And so they would see these increases.
The 10%, so they would also see the 10%. So I guess, I, okay. Because I, I know we've always said we have to charge the users in order to pay for the capital improvements that we're making. I'm just wondering if we say we need to, okay, so I'm just processing it.
And then to take it one step further, Commissioner, if you did do it from the general fund and subsidize it from the general fund, then you could make this statement that it is just the taxpayers in Fort Lauderdale that are subsidizing the water fund.
Right, but I don't want only Fort Lauderdale to pay for it. I want everybody to pay for it. But I'm wondering if they pay for it, how they want to pay for it, and we pay for it. I'm just wondering if there's a different way besides the user rate within the city of Fort Lauderdale to pay for something. But that's a different conversation, but I'm going to keep thinking and maybe keep talking.
All right, so those are good, those are the good points. I think that they're important for another discussion. But let's, let's let them move forward because we need to end this conversation. Please continue, gentlemen.
I've got two funds to cover, so.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. So let's move on to the next one on our list is the stormwater fund. And as mentioned earlier in this meeting, one of the key assumptions there is the non-ad valorem assessment, which is contemplated to be assessed in FY21. Additionally, we have within our model assumed that in FY21 or thereabouts, there would be for the phase two master plan projects, $200 million worth of revenue bonds levied. And in FY26, we have included another $200 million as far as a capital bond that would be issued in that year to continue to pay for the large generational infrastructure investments on stormwater. We've assumed kind of the interim financing schedule in the meantime that allows the city to start to do some of these projects in the current fiscal year and then ramp up as it moves into 2021 with the full amount of capital investments of 200 million. Additionally, operational and maintenance expenses, we've just continued to forecast, as we have in the past, that as you make these really large investments, you're likely at some point in the future to start to experience some increased operational and maintenance expenses in maintaining those. And we've just started to put placeholders in, in out years to pick up some of that cost. And it'll firm up as the budget continues to move forward and we roll these models each and every year. And so if we go to the next slide, I'll show you the projection of the stormwater fund. And what this currently shows right now is in that first year FY21, if we highlight right over that, there's a 54. Non-ad valorem assessment. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, perfect. So in FY21, the big change is to the non-ad valorem assessment, but also our level of revenue is projected to increase 54%. And what that allows us to do is the availability to borrow that $200 million and make those ongoing interest and principal payments and have the correct coverage level. And so what this particular forecast continues to show is that with that revenue adjustment in FY21, we would be sustainable. And then as we move toward FY26, a very similar conversation as we just had, if you do a bigger bond issue. do a bigger bond issue, like a $200 million that we currently have in there, likely revenues would need to continue to adjust in an upward direction to meet the new level of principal and interest that would be required to repay those debts. And so in FY 26, you can see I've got a placeholder in there right now of 49%, 12%, which is just showing you the just in time kind of increases that would be needed to repay that debt. And so with those level of.
That, that per unit cost is per annum, correct? Not per month?
Uh, yeah, it's per annum. You're correct. So when we switch over in 21, the rates we're showing up here are reflective of the annual single family bill per unit.
Okay, thank you. Keep going.
Perfect. So that's it on this one. I'm happy to take any questions or continue on to the last one.
Any questions? Okay, last one. Sanitation.
The last one, sanitation, save the best for last. Your current approved rates have a 4% annual adjustment factor in that through FY 24. And so we've modeled that within this platform. Additionally, we've put in some COVID impacts, which reduce franchise fees paid to this fund by roughly $1.3 million annual. And then additionally, as we mentioned on the building fund, there's a possible sale of land from the sanitation fund to the building fund. We have put that in as a placeholder, it'd be $2 million in proceeds to this fund in FY 21. That also has the effect of lowering some CIP costs. So we have a plant A remediation cost in this fund. That was previously roughly 1.8 million. It gets reduced to 900,000 in FY 21 if we have the sale of land. And then one of the other managerial strategies that we've talked about with this fund is currently it has an operating reserve target of 1.5 months. That's a little bit low from an industry standard perspective and also recognizing your coastal proximity, having storms and expenses that can come up from time to time. You need some reserves on hand. One thing that we've included in here is a movement to best practices, which would be three months of operation and maintenance expenses. And so if we move to the next dashboard, I'll just run through the quick highlights here. So you can see up in the top with the rate plan, in 2021, we've got that 4% inflator carrying out through 2024. And then based on what we're currently seeing, it looks like if everything played out exactly how we're forecasting, it could potentially come down to say a 2% level. And that's obviously contingent on how expenses are realized over time. If I look quickly at the operating fund in the top left-hand corner, a couple of things to point out there. And so as I mentioned, that change in reserve policy, you can see the upward slope on that flat target line for the next few years. And so what we're doing is slowly putting half a month into that reserve target till we get up to the three months of O and M. And then you can see it holds flat for the rest of the projection period. And what this is showing is with those 4%, we can likely get very close to that target in each and every year and build up a little bit more reserves and insurance, essentially protection in this fund with the exception of 2023. And that's just because the current contract that you have in place has an inflator that hits in that year. And so you see it drop a little bit in that particular fiscal year. But overall picture here, things are very, very sustainable with the historical increases that you just had to do that jump up the revenues and also the currently adopted 4% through 2024.
Any questions? Okay, great. Thank you so much. We really, really appreciate it.
Mayor?
So, yes, sir.
I, I'm sorry, I just wanted to mention one thing to Chris before we move on to our next meeting. And first, thank you so much to Brian and to the entire BAB and to Jacob and Kyle. Really appreciate all of this effort. But Chris, I just wanted you to know, when you're thinking a little bit more about the 2022 budget, I mean, I'm hearing increasingly a concern in my district and even outside of my district along the Los Olas corridor about the emergency response times. At my pre-agenda meeting last night, we, we had a good look at the last 12 months ending April 2020, and the times just seemed to be increasing. And in and around the Isles area, it's over 10 and a half minutes. It's just not acceptable. And I just want us to think about ways to do that. I know that the, the budget has increased a lot over the years with regards to fire, rescue, but still the times are constantly increasing. And as I said, there's a greater concern expressed. Brian was on that pre-agenda meeting last night, so we heard that from folks. I just want you to take that into consideration. A lot of people are already thinking about things we can do, maybe sites to build a substation, maybe in conjunction with a little small parking garage so that some parking fees can help staff that or pay for that. But I just wanted to throw that out there because I'm hearing this more and more and I don't blame folks for being upset with the 10 and a half minute emergency response time along the Los Olas corridor and the Isles. So I just wanted to throw that out. Thank you.
Good. Any other questions or points? All right, so thank you, everybody. The vice mayor echo his comments. Appreciate all the work Brian, you and the committee have put forward to us. This is an amazing amount of work. Sandtech, thank you so much. Your show and tell format really helps us a lot because it helps to visualize a lot of the decisions that we are going to have to make in the weeks, months, and even years ahead for those of us that come back. And, and I guess we'll take a 10-minute break. We'll begin our meeting, say at 6:10. So I'll adjourn this joint workshop and we'll begin our city commission meeting at 6:10.